We're ready.
All right, thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for October 26th, 2022. It's a little after 6 o'clock. We're here in city council chambers at 345 High Street in Hamilton. We have one public hearing this evening. It involves licensing fees for food establishments and food service operations. Please do a roll call.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
All members are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start off in our thing of prayer by council member Susan Bond, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please stand if you are able.
Father, please guide council and the decisions that we make this evening and throughout the year. Watch over our first responders who protect the city and especially this weekend as they keep our children safe for Halloween. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of our God and indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. We now go to special presentations. And the first one that we have is a dedication and a renaming for someone I think all of us knew and worked with and respected. We have some members of the Butch Hubble family here, don't we? Come on up. All right, I recognize most everybody here, but not everybody. So I'm going to pass this. Is on?
Yes.
It is on, okay. Let's go to pass this and introduce yourselves. If you're Lady Butch, just tell us how. Pass this.
Tina Jones, I'm a veteran, I'm a two-year veteran of council. Under Butch Hubble.
I'm a Butch Hubble, I'm a county county council.
Both hands, Anderson, daughter, first daughter.
None of them. Part's wide.
So we actually have multiple generations of Hubbles here and individuals he worked with. He was, he was actually to Hamilton, merely council. Bush was so proud of what he did when he came back to Hamilton. The, uh, the white MCA, how he worked with that, pulling people together from, uh, different, different demographics. He does pull people together. He was a veteran as well, and we're honored to, to have this honorary Butch Hubble Junior Way sign. The in our city. I'm going to show it to you first. And break the ways on there because do things the Butch Hubble way. And he was in the Navy, he was proud of that. He was law enforcement, I think, out in San Diego. He was proud of that. And I put this right in the middle of everybody. Would that be okay? Now, the exact location of these, which will be where?
Hanover Street is my understanding.
Okay. I mean, somebody streets of this town, which knew and, and he, uh, I don't know, he's an amazing guy. And I'm going to do a reverse order. Have whatever you want to say about Butch, feel free to say.
Um, Butch was a great grandfather to me, I know him a lot. Um, he's someone to look up to and send me on my way.
Well, I have a lot, but I think I'll make it short. Uh, I met him in Garfield Senior High School, and he kept pestering me in study hall. So I finally gave in. But he has given me three beautiful daughters, eight grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. No, six great-grandchildren.
Well, my dad was a really wonderful man. He loved Hamilton. He came back from San Diego, he was in the Navy and, uh, police department, and devoted a lot of time at the Booker T. Washington, um, boys and girls club, and a lot for city of Hamilton.
Well, the first time I met Butch was when I moved to Hamilton in 2005. I lived exactly three doors down from him. You know, so I have great friendship from there on.
Um, I met Butch in 2007, and he was such a motivational person. He was there through thick and thin, um, been emotional. He was a good friend, and he meant well for the community, and he wanted to see everybody get along. And he just motivated me and pushed me to be a better person and, um, got me really involved in a lot of community activities, and I cherish it to this day.
He was definitely a leader, and he tested people to do the right thing, and he was dedicated. And when he came back, he just thought he wanted to make a, a real impression of the city, and he really did. So Rich, when these go up, will there be some notice that they could be there maybe when the signs are actually put up?
Yes, Mayor, we'll coordinate with, uh, Daniel. We'll coordinate with the family and let them know when we can get our sign shop crews there. My understanding, we're putting up two additional signs.
I believe that's what we have been doing with the other ones. Is that, you understand who's the city clerk?
Uh, so there should be two signs on the each entryway on Hanover, that section of Hanover Street. So there should be one off of Front Street in Hanover and the other one leading on to Hanover and Central. So that section of Hanover Street.
Is this one of the two signs right here?
No.
No.
That's for the family.
This is a take-home sign.
Oh, okay.
We've been doing that too, and I'm not going to make that decision. Maybe you pass it through the holidays or on Thanksgiving Day. Thank you very much, and thanks for, for having the idea to do this. It's an honor because you deserve it. Thank you. Anybody on council wish to say any words about their experiences with Butch Hubble while the families here, the friends are here?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I just want to echo everything you said. Butch was such a great person, and he's been a big loss to our communities. So thank you for sharing him with us.
All righty, so next time we'll see, one of those signs will be put up, and please notify council and Daniel and Neil. You'll be there for a picture there, too. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Chris Haynes in a veteran's update.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council, how's everybody tonight? I apologize for the ball cap. I, uh, just finished driving 11 hours from Norfolk up to here, so I made it in time. So, so we're here to, uh, spend a little time with you. But, uh, some Veterans Day events coming up. Uh, as we all know, within the next couple of weeks is, uh, Veterans Day. A little history, I mean, we all went through history class, but, uh, you know, at the end of the Great War, uh, hostilities ended on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. The Treaty of Versailles was signed in June 28th of 1919, just about eight months after the, the hostilities had ended. So President Wilson proclaimed November 11th as Armistice Day. Well, in 1954, after World War II and the Korean War, it became Veterans Day with the signing of Public Law 380 by President Eisenhower. So for the last 68 years, uh, we have been celebrating Veterans Day. And again, it's a day to celebrate our veterans, not to mourn them, that's, that's on a different day, but to celebrate our, our veterans for, uh, for the courage that they had to, uh, to, uh, serve something greater than themselves, to leave their homes, to, uh, to do what was asked to do of them by their country. But here in Hamilton and around the county, there's a lot of things coming up over the next few weeks. Uh, the Butler County Veteran's Service Commission is having a Veterans Day event on November the 11th at the, at Butler County Fairgrounds. Uh, the AM Vets on Ross Avenue is hosting a Veterans Dinner. USA Cares is hosting a breakfast at the Benison. Veterans are free. I think, uh, other, uh, community members that want to attend is $25, I believe is what it is. Uh, and something I'm very proud of, you know, I come before this council five years ago, uh, and said I wanted to start a Hall of Fame here in the city, the City of Hamilton Veterans Hall of Fame. You know, and this, uh, November 6th, we will have our fourth induction class. For those Hamiltonians who served World War I, World War II, Korea, the Cold War, Vietnam, and the National Guard, uh, we, we're going to honor these. And to date, including those coming up on November 6th, we have inducted 76 Hamiltonians into the Veterans Hall of Fame. You know, I mean, that's a, that's something I never thought of when I stood before council here five years ago, uh, that we would be this far along, but what a great, uh, what a great program it is, and, and all are welcome to attend, uh, as long as you've registered with the Chamber of Commerce. We need to know how many heads are going to be there, but, uh... Some other things that, that are, that are on the horizon, uh, that's been talked about, uh, the Butler County Memorial Fundraiser. You know, at, at Veterans Park, there off New London Road, there is a wall with names of those, uh, in Butler County who were, were killed in action, uh, or, or killed during their service to our country. Uh, there's not been a new panel added in a nu- a number of years. So the memorial, I believe there's a memorial committee out there. Am I correct, Pat?
That is correct. We, we tried to pull together individuals who were involved when it first was built.
Right.
And, um, it's got some city folks, some county folks, obviously veterans, and, um, we have $10,000 to put the two panels up, and the cost of inscription, we're, we're still figuring out, but the fundraiser is just great.
Yeah, yeah, and it's going to be some fundraising going on probably throughout the month of November. You know, i- if any local businesses would like to get involved, they can reach out to me, uh, Pat, I'm sure, uh, and, and we can, uh, get you in the right direction on that. You know, I talked to Mike Farmer, the executive director of, uh, Butler County Veteran's Service Commission. He believes there's 15 names throughout the county from the Iraq Afghanistan war that's possibly going on there, and I believe Hamilton has eight of them, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, again, it's time to honor them on that Veterans Park memorial wall. So we're, again, we're looking for businesses to help. Maybe, uh, if you have a restaurant, you can dine to donate, a roundup kind of thing, uh, do something that could, uh, could, could help fund the, uh, the memorial wall. And, and I speak for our Hall of Fame Committee, too, that, uh, we're committed to assist in any way we can, uh, for their fundraising efforts. But, uh, so again, a lot of things going on here, uh, throughout the city. The Legion has stuff going on, the VW in Fairfield has a lot of things going on. A lot of us veterans go out and, and speak to the schools on that day. I believe, uh, actually, Mr. Williams will be at Baden on, uh, the 9th. I'm pretty sure I'll be at Wilson on the 11th. So, uh, again, we're still out there serving our communities, too, because that's what we enjoy doing. I'll close probably with one thing here, you know, uh, it seems like every Veterans Day, and I, and I don't know what us veterans, all veterans, did to, uh, to assist mattress manufacturers, but it seems like there's always a, a mattress, uh, uh, sale, the world's greatest, on Veterans Day. So I don't know what we did to, to help out the retailers and the manufacturers of mattresses, but, uh, if you're in the, uh, the market for one, give it a couple of weeks and you'll get a good deal, I guess. So it seems like it's always on TV, but, uh, but those are some things going on. If anybody has any questions, it may, I'd be happy to ask.
Want to add a couple of things, Chris. Mr. Brew Works is, is creating a special Veterans Pilsner, and money from that is going to be going towards, um, the wall. The wall? Veterans wall. Yeah, Mike, Mike Farmer sent that to me. On our agenda tonight, there is a resolution to name November Veterans Month in November 2022. I hope we do that each and every year just to create awareness. And how many veterans do we have sitting out in the audience? I know we've got at least one, two, three. Why don't you stand up if you would, please? And, um, thank you all for your service. I, uh, uh, it means a lot to us, the fact that, that we have some city people who served, obviously, like you, Chris, and, and Dan, you're, you're serving in your own special way by coming to council and telling us kind of what's going on. So veterans continue to be involved with the community, so thanks a lot, you guys. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Train Depot relocation update.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. I hope everyone has noticed there's been activity this week at the Train Depot. Coon Restoration has mobilized, started removing the, uh, wooden platform that existed in the two-story building, and then they're going to start working on removing the floor as well. We're expecting that to take a couple of weeks. I've also talked to Thicker's Demolition. They're scheduled to mobilize on Friday and to begin removing the connecting structure as well to open it up. We're hoping that that will allow Coon Restoration easier access to the single story to remove the floor and that structure as well. We'll wait and see on that. I talked to Wolf House movers today, and they've unfortunately scheduled some additional work through the month of November. They are going to have a few days that they will try and bring a crew in here to start initial preparation to relocate the two-story building. The statement he made is that they have to wrap it with cable, which I presume is how they keep the structure stable when they start raising it up. So they are going to, um, try and get some of that work done ahead of time, but their current schedule is to come in in the first full week of December with a full crew. The other comment they made to me today is the fact that they do, don't really want to have, because it's such a small site, they don't want to have other contractors working on the same site as they do. They want the full site for their own, uh, access. Remember, they're going to have to, uh, put steel beams through the walls of the existing structures in order to raise them, and I haven't talked to them directly yet. I will have this conversation as well, but I suspect they're going to have to, we're going to have to do some lane closures on MLK when they do this work, too. That's pretty much all I have at the moment. I did include the rest of, uh, the, um, financing, uh, schedule that I had prepared last time. There are no changes to it at this moment, so I just kept it on with the, uh, rest of the, uh, presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions to Rich? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now go to audience of, of citizens. Individuals who wish to speak may speak during this part of the agenda or may reserve the right to speak when the item is up for a vote on council floor. All individuals who intend to address city council require to sign this blue public speaking book. Uh, each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. First, we have Jim Loneman.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm Jim Loneman, in, uh, uh, 135 Timber Hill Drive. Okay, uh, first of all, I like, I don't know, see, um, why can't, um, public restroom at, um, at, um, police station now? They go, oh, I can't get there.
I'm, I'm going to make a list, if you've got a list. Is that the only question that you have?
Well, no, that's, I'm saying, why, I don't know, sometimes I go, matter, I got it today, and I had to go outside.
Okay, let's just make a list of any issues that you might have. One is public restrooms, is that correct?
Public restroom at, at the police station, yeah.
Okay.
It's closed down, you know?
Are there any?
Is that, is that legal?
I'm just going to make a list first. Is there anything else after public restrooms?
I'm saying, no.
Okay, all right.
Public restroom, I'm saying, is that legal?
Actually, I do not know the answer to your question, but I, someone will get back with you about the public restroom access in government buildings. Okay, somebody will get back with you.
Okay.
And you've got your phone number on here. Is that, is this still your phone number, the one you wrote down here?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody will get back with you.
Okay, oh, I don't know, I don't know, I think I got, okay, um, I, um, the train tracks, you know, um, uh, there's, uh, I was in, um, Laurel, for the last three, uh, the last three, uh, the eight days I was been here, our last weekend after, so I got three days, the whole train tracks in the evening time were totally stopped for over 10 minutes, almost over 20, over 12 hours at that place. Was something wrong with the trains there, something wrong with the tracks there, or what?
We are, uh, tracking that situation. We're not the only community who, who has that issue. Individuals are able to call a particular access number to, to complain, uh, but you, the city and our residents in our city are, are paying attention to the stoppages and working with CSX and others on those situations. We, we are.
Back to where it should be, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's, needs to be worked on, and there's ways to do it, and we are trying to...
I'm explaining that since I'm in Hamilton, right?
We're, we're, we're making things better, and we're, we're going as, as quick as we can to make things better.
Maybe thinking of our 20, 30 years, huh?
No, it'd be less than that.
29, okay. Thank you.
It'll be less than that. Thank you, Jim. Chris Cannell. He always brings good news.
Chris Cannell, 1309 Cleveland Avenue, Hamilton. Good evening, Mayor Mohler, city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Uh, Mr. Holbrook has asked me to give quarterly updates on, to council on the various happenings at the Hamilton City Schools. Uh, tonight I'd like to focus on the new co-op program we implemented last year. August of 2021, I was hired to start a co-op, uh, program for the Hamilton City Schools to connect students with local businesses in hopes of placing these students in part-time jobs. I began this task by visiting local businesses to better understand their staffing needs as well as collecting all the basic information such as minimum age requirements, hourly starting salary, flexible scheduling, location, and how to apply. We are compiling all this data and creating a website for the students to view. Most students have no idea how many companies that are here in our, in our backyard in Hamilton, and my goal is to change that. To date, I have visited over 100 companies to advocate for our students. I developed a job survey to gauge the students in hopes of matching jobs to student interest. We are collecting company videos and creating a video library to continuously run on five flat screens we have in our high school cafeteria to help the students visualize these companies. We've held, uh, two job, uh, planning expos last year that brought in over 40 organizations and attracted over 400 students. We will be holding another one November 16th at the high school. I have partnered with the City of Hamilton with, uh, amazing folks like Jody Gunderson and Gene Pope as another avenue to reach these local companies and share opportunities. We have also added a career explorations class that teaches resume writing, soft skills, customer service, and introduces them to learning about various industries, uh, such as what is advanced manufacturing and what is healthcare. Uh, the initial goal Mr. Holbrook and I set was to place 10 students in co-op jobs by the end of the first school year. We ended up placing 118. To date, we are over 200 students that have been added to the Hamilton's workforce. Out of these, 10 graduating seniors were placed in permanent full-time positions with companies such as Kettering Hospital, Community First, Durana Hybrid, ThyssenKrupp, Billstein, and Kyvac. As challenging as this position is, I stop and think about the fact that opening a door to employment opportunities may very well be life-changing for these students. Each door I open fulfills my personal goal as well as the mission of the Hamilton City Schools, positively impacting learning and life.
Chris, thank, thank you for your success because this is one of the most life-changing, educational, make-a-few-bucks programs that I've ever heard of at a school district, which has really been a success. They've become more, better self-esteem, more confident in the business world. What, what absolutely great program.
Thank you very much.
And I think we've all seen it, we've all met, I believe, several of the people who you have placed, and, I mean, you're getting them ready for life, and, and we thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Questions or comments? Mr. Mayor? Please.
Chris, I think one of the best things is being a business owner that you said that you're doing that's helping these students are, um, the years that I was in business and looked at resumes, they start to go downhill in quality over the years, um, and complete, um, it's almost like helping somebody balance a checkbook. It's very important how good of a quality of a resume is, and I just saw that decline over the years, and I, it's, and that, that's the best thing you could be doing right there, and I, I think that's helping a lot with the job placement, and I applaud you for doing that because that's a very important part, uh, step to a job, so...
Yeah, well, thank you. Right now, they're starting with the career explorations courses in 10th grade, but I'd like to see it hit 9th grade. Start the resume and continue adding to it, um, all through your high school year.
Yeah, I just, I just saw a decline in the quality of them in the years, and I think you're doing, that's one of the best things you could do, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great job.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Chris has come to my class and worked with a couple of my students. I think I'd like to invite you back to my classroom to work on resume building anytime that you're available. He had a great conversation with some at-risk students. I believe they emailed you back, and, uh, he's working with some, some students that really need Chris's help, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Hancock.
My name's Dan Hancock. I live 67 Herman Avenue in Hamilton, Ohio. I had a couple people call me, uh, from over in Gordon Smith there and that. They want to know, are we going to continue, are we going to put a park in over there? Because they'd like to have a park put in over there, and I thought the, uh, board had approved of putting a park in over there, and like I said, I had quite a few people call me about that, and, uh, they have quite a few kids in that, in, in the area there that would be able to use it. Uh, the next thing is, is, uh, the park at the end of Mark Avenue that we're trying to get, have we heard any more feedback from the school board on that, uh, about us being able to, uh, do something with the land there for the city and make it a park for the kids and that, and also running trail for the Hamilton Running Club and make a dog park out of it, and there's a bunch of big opportunities for that area right there at the end of Mark Avenue. Uh, the second thing is, the city now put down the brand-new, uh, paving there on... The second thing is, the city now put down the brand-new paving there on Hermay and Sanders and all that. But when they paved it, you run down there, you run across and the sore lids are down, so you're bouncing up and down. They need to raise all the sore lids through that whole section there of Lee and Sanders and Hermay and all through there. All the sore lids are down and it's just like hitting a good bump there and that. And I had quite a few calls on that, too. The other thing is, is the fence should be cured by now and that. I mean, you put in pretreated lumber and that, so it should be ready for painting and that. And like I said, if we get to paint that, I'll start painting that. Like I said, because it's gonna start turning real cold here and that. And I'd like to get it done before, or at least get it pretty well done before the weather turns bad and it starts weathering on the fence there. The next thing is, is down a lended wall, you started tearing up the brick pavement there and that and putting down blacktop, which really looks nice on the one that you did. But there's four more of them that have to be done yet, which they haven't even started on. It's just like they quit and left and aren't going to do anything. So it'd be nice to finish the other four up like you did the one you already did, which really looks nice and makes it look more presentable for people walking across and traffic going across it. The other thing is, is some friends at church and that wanted to go to Spooky Nook and that and have a few drinks and that. And they said they couldn't because they don't have a liquor license. They said something's being held up with getting their liquor permit. So they'd like to go back, the four couples and that, and they have a nice drink there. They went to the grand opening of the place and they said they loved it, loved what was done to the place and they would like to look to go back and spend some more time there. The other thing is, is you put up the new flashing lights there at Eaton Avenue, at Mark Avenue and that. Well, the lights are up now, it's good and that. But if you go down Main Street and you're heading south in front of Highland High Elementary there, you've got a flashing light up there on a sign there, which you can see four blocks away. The one coming down Eaton Avenue from the hospital there for Mark Avenue, you can't see that until you're exactly right on top of it. You'd either, you need to cock the sign more towards the street so the lights shine on it, shine out more, or turn the light up on it and that. So that's it.
All right, let's kind of go through these. A lot of these city issues involving paving, lighting, the blacktop, I've noticed people in the city out there writing things down, okay? I don't need to go into those except saying you've got the attention of professionals when you notice something that might need to be worked on or improved. A lot of these things are, when the time is right, when the scheduling is appropriate, they'll get those things done. Regarding the parks, the Gordon Smith as well as Mark Avenue. Gordon Smith, that'll have its time. Mark Avenue, that's a process.
Good.
That's a process.
Good.
I've noticed the Hermay situation. And as far as painting that wood, you'll be one of the first people who'll be notified when that time is right, okay? Because I want to be out there painting with you. You brought us a list, people wrote things down, we all wrote things down. Just kind of work with on the schedule and we'll get as many things done by the end of the year or improved at least, or on the process that we can. And Spooky Nook, that's gonna happen. You know there's gonna be a license there. Tell your friends at church and your neighbors that that day will come and we'll all, we'll all be there, probably at the same time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please.
You're talking about Sunday sales at.
I don't know if a Sunday sales, the people that are in my Bible study class and that, at church Sunday brought up the fact to me that they went there, four couples went there and that, so that's eight people, wanted to go there for a drink. I don't know if it was Sunday or through the week or what day it was and that. But they could not get drinks and that because they said they didn't have their liquor permit yet.
I'm not sure if that's a Sunday license issue, but their restaurant and their bar will, that'll have its time.
I don't know if it's a new brewery part of it.
Brew works on Sunday? So I'm not sure, the brew works on Sunday? I'm not sure if the answer is about if they're open or they're allowed to sell on Sunday. I don't know what the answer to that question is. Just tell them to be patient, we'll get some, I mean, you'll know it. You'll know it on Sunday when there is Sunday availability.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Brett Kirkpatrick. And Brett, I did see that you're drive-through pharmacy is on the caucus agenda.
It is.
Thing's agenda item number two. And I just have a question for maybe anybody in the city out there. When will that actually be? Will we get through that tonight if we go ahead and pass the caucus agenda? Concur with the recommendations or is that something which has to be a hearing said?
Recommendation, it would be done.
There you go. That might get totally done tonight.
Well, great.
Microphone yours, man.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
No, go right ahead, microphone is yours.
And City Council, I'm Brett Kirkpatrick, the President and CEO of Community First Solutions, 230 Lovelace Street. And again, I'm here just to, to, in support of the conditional use application for the drive-through of our pharmacy. You know, Community First Solutions, been in the community for over 104 years. Our goal is really to serve. We were one of the first nonprofit pharmacies in the nation. Really proud of that and quite frankly, one of the last standing wholly-owned local pharmacies in this area. Moving to Main Street and really enhancing that location with a drive-through is gonna provide a great service to our community in general. So appreciate your consideration and support.
Well, that just went through Planning Commission again, I believe.
It did.
You folks are very responsive to any kind of questions that were out there. And so if we concur in the recommendation and that particular report, then that'll take care of it and you're on your way.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Okay. We have got, I believe, a mother-daughter situation?
Yeah, I'll be speaking.
You'll be speaking, Caitlin? Okay, all right, come on up. You list your name and your address. And before you say anything, I want you to be aware that there's a resolution tonight about us receiving that grant that I sent you an email about. So I tell you what, I've been around here for quite a while and these folks in the city are so motivated to address this issue. And a lot of that is thanks to Edwin Porter, who is here today, Dan Arthur, Joy. So many folks in our city have rung with this. And the touchdown will be scored relatively soon, but there's been a lot of moving parts. But, okay, I want to make sure that you, we're actually voting on something tonight, Terry Lane. Go ahead.
So my name is Caitlin Dassenbrock, I live at 656 Terry Lane. And I've been in the emails of all of you recently talking about how the water main breaks are continuous on my street, the little U-shaped street we live on. Saturday morning at 6:00 a.m., I was actually out of state when I received a call that my back windshield had been completely shattered, as well as one of my neighbors' his back windshield and the back two windows. Since then, we had another water main break up on Terry Court and one again yesterday, right on the corner of my house. And we're just looking for updates, making sure this is getting done. I appreciate those of you who have gotten back to me, as do my neighbors. We've all really appreciated it. Just looking for updates and making sure that this is gonna get done because we're tired.
Oh, we totally understand and I know there's been people working there over the weekend. This is a situation where when I, when I say the city has worked faster than probably any other city, I believe that we have since Saturday. And I can't speak for everything, but I know about a large grant to put the ductile iron pipes. Is that correct? Matter of fact, Edwin, can you say a few words right now? Have you met Edwin?
We spoke briefly right before the meeting started.
Well, he's the man kind of behind the scenes who's been doing a lot of this with his team. And maybe Edwin can answer some of your questions right now about the timeline.
Yeah, so we've been working diligently.
Thank you.
We, we've been working diligently since the water main break started really accelerating. So for the past couple of months, we've completed a design project, so we fast-tracked a design project. That design is complete. And we were just notified today of Ohio Public Works Commission, so we received a 90% grant to execute this project under an emergency-type situation. And so over the next couple of months, you know, starting, starting within the next couple of weeks, we will actually have contractors on the ground to start this project. And it should take a few months. Hopefully, we can get the project installed before the weather turns. And, you know, to restore the asphalt. If not, we'll get the water distribution system installed. We'll do a temporary patch and then we'll have to wait until the asphalt plants reopen in the springtime to do the road restoration. So we're aware of the issues. We have a design complete. We've got contractors mobilized and we have a funding source and so, you know, and, you know, we totally agree and empathize that it's a problem and we're going to resolve it. I apologize for your car, that's unfortunate. It was a little yellow buggy, it's pretty cool.
I want to thank you, Caitlin, for sending us all on council emails. I mean, I, it's amazing that when you get involved and part of the process, how things can start really going. And I know it's gonna be Terry Court, Terry Lane, Ross Hill, Wildwood. It's gonna be that entire area. So for all of you, I mean, there's at least two of you here who have been going through this and which went over through the weekend. It's being, it's being addressed. I wish we could get it done overnight, but this is, this is gonna take some work. This is an expensive project, but we're gonna, we're gonna get it done. And if you have any kind of questions or comments, we will respond back to you quickly. Like I said, Edwin and his team, Dan Arthur and the city folks who went out on Saturday there, they're doing their job. And I think we're reacting about as fast or faster than anybody else could. But if you keep seeing things, if things happen, you know how to contact us. I want to say thank you because you taking action and informing us about what's going on helped move this, move this along.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your leadership and stay tuned. You'll be seeing people out there, I guarantee. Is that correct, Edwin, they're gonna be seeing people out there?
Absolutely.
There you go.
Glad to see them.
We've also got, so we have our troubleshooters that are gonna start driving it twice a day. So essentially, what they're gonna do is twice a day, they're gonna go out and do a proactive inspection. They're gonna look for any minor water leaks, any seepage. And if they see that, then we'll, of course, react and be able to repair that before there's a water main burst itself. And so during, during the, you know, couple of months process of installation, we're gonna be proactively inspecting and making repairs until the system's installed, complete, and switched over.
That's the city in action. And like I said, feel free to contact us. You can use 311. Contact me, I know that I don't, I don't live that far away. And I just want to say thank you for bringing it to our attention and letting the city people do their job, getting the funding source, getting the material to make these, to make these underground water lines right.
We are just a little bit nervous. I know he brought up the, it might having to be put off to the spring at some point. These water main breaks get a lot worse during the winter. And it's, it's with the water freezing on the cars as well, it's hard to get places.
You, if you want to share anything like that with Edwin while he's here, I mean, you folks have an opportunity now to talk face-to-face with our Director of Infrastructure. And he's, he's the guy. And I think that might be a good time to talk to him, if that's okay with you, Edwin. I mean, I know you, you're a busy guy. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
It might be helpful for those who are watching to understand what's going on. I mean, it was aging water lines that the city had intended to be addressing. Is that correct, Edwin? So this isn't something unusual, but it's unfortunate, absolutely.
Yeah, so these water lines are made of polyethylene pipe and we've noticed failure of these polyethylene pipes specifically in this area. And so what we've noticed is that we've had a trend of, you know, breaks and then separated by a certain amount of time. And that amount of time in between breaks has been reducing until now it's substantially increased. And so we've noticed, you know, the trend has increased exponentially. And so we, we were aware that there was some breakage and we had it on our list. But the acceleration of breakage exceeded our initial plan for replacement.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Edwin. Okay, that's all I've got for the audience and citizens. We'll now go to the Consent Agenda that handles matters such as staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, our financial reports for September 2022, and the best member report for 2022. We do have a caucus agenda with four items on it. And at this time, I'll ask that we go to the Committee of the Whole so City Council can hear some presentations about some of these caucus agenda items. So there's a motion that the regular meeting be recessed and the Committee of the Whole will take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion of Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing known that motion is carried. It is 6:46. Adam, we're gonna have the presentations?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm from City Council. I'll do the presentation on our first item for tonight on our caucus agenda. So this is an alley or a street vacation request for two unnamed alleys between 123 Pershing Avenue and 122 Chestnut Street. The request to vacate these alleys is from the city of Hamilton as petitioner. These are developed alleys, meaning that they're paved and they run north and south off of, I'll show a map on the next slide, but for the most part, they're about the same size, 120 feet in length by 10 feet in width. So this is a request also by the St. Paul Miracle Center for their potential expansion on the north side of their campus for a career center in a tech school. Here on this location map here, the parcels are outlined in red. As you can see, they run along Pershing Avenue down to the Pershing Avenue Alley and then from that alley onto Chestnut Street. So with a brief history about this item, council received a caucus report as a petition on September 14th in which the motion at that time, or the recommendation at that time, was to forward it to the Planning Commission. On October 6th, the Planning Commission had a meeting which involved an interdepartmental review, which there were no objections, a 200-foot notification letter and a sign posted of a public hearing on the property in which there were no objections, as well as a recommendation to City Council on how to move forward with this. So this motion involves recommending that council approve this vacation of these two unnamed alleys with the conditions of approval. These aren't the exact ones, but they're just, we're just paraphrasing that any future work that happens on the property goes through our interdepartmental review committee and is approved by them, that council waives the right for a review from the Board of Revisions and Assessments and wavering the need for appraisal of the property as well. And, and the last, the last one being payment of two-thirds payment, which this is for a specific process of a private property owner being a petitioner. The reason why we have these conditions of approval is because the city is the petitioner with this application. So I think that's the summation of my report. Do we have any questions about this item?
Questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So up next for caucus agenda item number two is a conditional use approval, which will be presented by our Planning Director, Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. This is 1026 Main Street. I believe the, it's a strip center, commercial strip center. The location, 1026 Main is actually the old Howell Cleaners is what I think you would know it as. And there's a proposal that we've already discussed a little bit tonight that's a conditional use to allow a drive-through for a pharmacy on property zone B1, which is community business. This shows the circulation proposal that they're proposing for the, for the drive-through. And most notable is you'll see that they're proposing access from McKinley Avenue and then, and actually through a city alleyway to get to the drive-through, which is shown as the number one. Here are some images just to kind of orient you the Howell, old Howell Cleaners location and then also to see what the alley looks like in its current condition or at least what it looked like two weeks ago. The trees may have been cut back at this point. I did want to take a moment and do something that I don't always do for these presentations to council and that is to highlight community feedback that we got from a neighbor because the neighbors were not able to participate in the hearing. And I was actually expecting them to be here tonight, but they're not here. But I did want to communicate what they said because they, their property runs the, most of the length of the alley. So I wanted to make sure that you knew what they had said and what we worked to address with them. So it's Ms. Carol Hartman and she expressed concerns about the sides and the width of the alley and just general traffic, more traffic. traffic on McKinley Avenue, that there might be more trash in the alley, and that there's potential for drive-through customers to hit her existing privacy fence. So we spent, even though she wasn't able to attend the public hearing and isn't here tonight, we did have a lot of conversations with her on the phone, and also via email, and we worked to try to address these. So the first is that Community First Solutions, because they were also, Brett was part of the conversations as well. They, they stated that the volume, their volume and hours are not comparable to a Walgreens or CVS. And actually, the way the conditions are written, you know, any, if, if, if it were a drive, if, if for some reason Community First Solutions wasn't there anymore, and a different kind of drive-through wanted to come in, they would need to come back, because it's written that way that, you know, that there are certain hours of operation, and it's a certain level of intensity. So a Starbucks coming in would be a very different kind of drive-through. Then, secondly, we had, you know, engineering, as always, looked at the site plan and to, and took a especially deep dive on this to address the concerns for the neighbors with the alley act, the use of the alley for a drive-through. And they said that traffic, they, they stated they had no objections to the drive-through, and that they would install signs so the alley would be one-way only from McKinley to Main Street. This would reduce the likelihood of people using the residential part of McKinley to access the drive-through. And then reiterated that that's, they anticipate that most of the motorists will travel from Main Street to McKinley, not through the residential part of McKinley Avenue. And then they also requested that Community First Solutions install reflective delineators along the alley to keep motorists on the pavement. We spoke with the property owner for 1026 Main, and he committed to saying that if anyone did hit the fence, that he would pay to repair it. And that became a condition of approval, that we are recommending. And then the property owner also noted that he already pays someone monthly to clean up the alley, and that will continue in regards to the trash. It's also, I guess, worth noting that both Community First Solutions and the property owner of 1026 Main stated that they were hopeful that the actual use of the alley by one of the tenants could actually be a positive as far as reducing some of the current negative traffic going on in the alley. So that, you know, there was just that balance of stating that, that there's hope that actually more, a little bit more traffic might be a benefit for safety reasons. That is the summation of my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Liz, on the alley that I'm looking at right here on my phone that I'm trying to blow it up on, there's a lot of trees that run along that alley that, well, let's see right there, sorry. The, those trees, are those on the neighbor's property, or are they, who's going to pay to trim those back?
Well, I believe that they are being trimmed back by the property owner and the tenant for 1026 Main. Whose property they're actually on is a, I think it's maybe a mixture. And I think that there's a desire to have it trimmed back, but not removed completely, because they add an additional level of privacy. So it's that balancing act.
Basically trimming them back so that the alley looks a little bit wider and not so dark back?
Correct.
But I'm just wondering if the property owner is the one that's responsible for that, or?
They, from the get-go, it seemed like they were taking responsibility for that. The commerce, the 10, the business strip.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Just one question, Liz. Does that alley go through to?
No.
Carmen? It doesn't. So it stops somewhere along there. If you went straight?
It really seems to just serve the back of this shopping center.
Oh, okay. So it's more like a driveway?
In, in practice, yes.
Is it maintained by the city, like snow removal? Would we take care of it, or?
I don't believe that we.
Okay.
I think that the landlord does, uses it, cleans it for snow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Next up for item number three, which deals with a resurfacing project on State Route 128, we have Rich Engel, our Director of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. Before I start on this caucus report, let me respond to a couple of questions I've heard this evening. On the snow removal in alleys, city does not remove snow in alleys, just on the main streets. The second question was on the manholes on the Sanders-Leo Drive project. Those were intentionally left low. We're going in and using our new procedure called Mr. Manhole, where we cut out a circular ring around the manhole, raise the manhole, casting up to a proper elevation, and then fill that space between the asphalt and the man, and the metal casting with concrete. We believe it's going to be a better system for the, for our sanitary sewers, and also to alleviate any future problems with the manholes sinking in with the asphalt.
Rich, if I may, I believe the Sanders, Hermay, all of those streets, Leo, were just completed this past week.
Correct.
And again, the timetable to be able to put the, in the name of the system again?
Mr. Manhole.
Mr. Manhole. That was done on B Street, is going to be done in those streets. Would that be, would you guess that that'd be completed by wintertime?
Yes, that's, that's the plan, yes. I thought they had started this week, but I wasn't sure if they did or not.
They're not. But I assumed that that was going to take place. And I live fairly near where all of those three surfaces were done.
That's, that's one of the last items to be finished, for those streets to be completed. So I'm sure they want to get that completed before cold weather really arrives.
Thank you.
You think maybe next meeting, we can show that video? That was a good video on that. That was pretty interesting.
Right.
I think the public may like that. Dan would enjoy that, too. So how they, how they do that process.
We can share that with Jacob, and you can put it on our website.
It's a nice process. It's interesting video to watch.
So this caucus report is related to State Route 128 resurfacing. ODOT is running a project on a number of miles of State Route 128. It, it does encroach into the city's corporation limits. ODOT is requesting consent legislation by council, which we have done in the past on other projects where ODOT has needed to enter into the city corporation limits. The project is 100% funded by ODOT. There is no funding by the city, and the resurfacing may begin in late 2023. The two areas that will be affected by the city are, on the left is the, a short section just south of Pershing Bridge and the, or Columbia Bridge off of Pershing Avenue and New London Road. And on the right is further south at the southerly corporation limit. And it's, it's not going to include the section that resides entirely in the city. It's only those sections that have a combined city-ODOT delineation. Are there any questions about this? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item on the caucus agenda, item number four, will be presented by our Executive Director of Internal Services, Mr. Tim Wortman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens. This is a piece of legislation that is intended to, as it says, amend codified ordinances pertaining to employee fringe benefits, to allow for current employees to opt into the paid time off system, or what we call the PTO system. So just a little bit of background. The city began implementation of a PTO system in 2015. As part of that, you, well, I'm not sure how many people on this council, but the council at the time passed legislation that said non-union employees hired as of January 1, 2016, or later, would be placed into the PTO system. Currently, there are still 109 employees that remain on what we term the traditional leave system. And the traditional leave system has basically got three buckets of leave rather than a single bucket of leave. So the traditional has sick leave, vacation, and holidays, and there's different rules for use of those. PTO is a simple, simpler system. So as you see at the bottom there, the PTO system does consolidate all those leaves into a single bucket, rather than having all these separate buckets of leave for folks to use. So it's the benefits of the PTO system. Increased flexibility. One good example is an employee would have greater flexibility to use PTO to attend to ill family members. Currently, right now, there's some limits on use of sick leave. So if you've got, just as an example, when I started with the city and my wife had our child, I was allowed basically two days of sick leave at the time. If I was under the PTO system, I'd have had a lot more flexibility. So that's one thing. The second thing is ease of administration. There's no need for HR and/or supervisors to request doctor's notes, and then make a judgment as to whether the sufficient, there was sufficient information provided to be able to use sick leave. And finally, the way that the PTO accrues, it's on a pay period by pay period basis, rather than the way the vacation accrues at this point, is you accrue basically through the year, and then as of January 1, you get it all put into your accrual. So this allows for a more even accrual of leave. So when we put the legislation before you at the next council meeting, it'll probably, well, we're anticipating it'll be an emergency legislation primarily to allow us to implement it before the end of the year. What the legislation would do is allow for a one-time opportunity for folks that are in the traditional leave system to opt into the PTO system. And again, this is voluntary. So folks that are in the traditional leave system that determine that they, you know, want to stay in that system, that that's the better system for them, they'll be allowed to do that. But the feedback that we've gotten since we've had this PTO system in place is that there are a number of people that would opt into this PTO system. And the other thing it's going to do is make it clear that employees who leave employment with the city and then are later rehired will be put into this new PTO system, because eventually, we anticipate that all the non-union employees working for the city would be in the PTO system. Again, we're shooting for an implementation date of 1/1/2023. So we'll have, we'll need some time to solicit people that want to do this and get the pay system in place to allow for this type of accrual on a go-forward basis. So that's why we're doing it as an emergency, and you'll see that over the, we'll do two, probably two separate readings, but we will ask that it be an emergency so that we can just proceed as soon as you've passed the legislation. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, that takes care, I believe, of Committee of the Whole. I accept the motion that the Committee of the Whole be closed.
So moved.
Second.
My councilmember, Nab. Second, my councilmember, Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:04. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote to go back into the regular meeting.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Yes, we're back in regular meeting at 7:04. I'll accept the motion that council received reports of the consent agenda and current recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
My councilmember, Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. So we now go to the public hearing. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. So we now go into the public hearing section of our meeting.
So this item number five is a public hearing regarding amending subpar paragraphs A through E of Section 173, 3.01 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to license fees for certain food establishments and food service operations, repealing said existing subpar paragraphs A through E thereof. And Mayor, we also have Cindy Hogg of our Health Department who's present to provide a presentation about these fees.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and residents of the City of Hamilton. I am Cindy Hogg. I'm the Assistant Health Director for the City of Hamilton. K. Ferrara has asked that I make this presentation to you tonight. This presentation deals with the cost, the proposed food operation licensing fee changes for 2023. Per the Ohio Administrative Code, each year, every health department is required to do a cost methodology concerning the licensing fees for food operations. This cost methodology is the time spent by each employee in each of the program areas for the food operation licenses. Plan review hours are calculated, employees' total wages, including benefits, travel costs, and training and educational costs are involved in this cost methodology. An administrative fee of 30% is built into the formula. The formula is set up by the Ohio Department of Health, and every local health department has to use this formula to develop these proposed fee changes. It includes the number of licenses that are issued in each area. It includes the total number of income from those licenses, and the total, and the total of the time, wages, and benefits that are incorporated with our employees. It then calculates the maximum amount of, of, the maximum amount to be charged in each of the fee areas. The cost must be neutral. Per the Ohio Revised Code, a letter must be sent to all current license holders. We did that. They were all notified. Our proposed fees were presented, and they were approved by the Advisory Board of Health. All fees have been calculated to go up, unfortunately. This is due to COVID-19. Remember, these fees are judged off the 2021 licensing period. At that time, a lot of our restaurants were closed, and a lot of them had reduced menus. Currently now, those food establishments have opened up, and now we have additional costs with our time spent in each of those programs. Here you can see the proposed fee comparisons from other local health departments in our area, City of Little Town, Springdale City, City of Cincinnati, Hamilton County, and Butler County. Hamilton cities are located in the red. The City of Hamilton Health Department proposed, proposed fees. These include a state fee that is added in to each of those of $28. This slide shows the current fees, and then the proposed fees, and each, and the number of food operations, the different levels that we have, and the number of inspections that are required in each of those facilities. Tonight, we're asking that you approve these fees. Do you have any questions concerning any of the proposed fees?
Any questions at all? Thank you. That is on our agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Mab.
I'd like to thank you for working through all the nuances of COVID, you and your team, the responsible parties, working with the food service establishments. You'll remember that I'm in the food business and, and things. And I've talked to a lot of restaurateurs who understand how complex this has been, this time has been. So no surprises as to the advance and the explanation you shared with us tonight and things. But again, I wanted to go on record of thanking you and your team for all the work that's accomplished in food safety, and ensuring that the people that are enjoying the different places that they go to eat, whether they are, I'll call it a, a closed audience that we have in schools, or closed audience that we have in healthcare, or whether it's the, the public businesses that, that have to comply with these ordinances and things like that. Thank you for all the work.
Thank you. That's greatly appreciated. I'll make sure, share that with our staff.
Please do. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nab. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving license fees for food establishments and food service operations? Anyone on council wish to be heard at this time, or to make a motion? Is there a motion that the regular meeting be reconvened?
So moved.
Second.
My councilmember, Nab. Motion by councilmember Nab. Seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. I didn't hear somebody, I apologize.
Or Mayor, could we amend that motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting, please?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
That should be in there. The motion that the public hearing be closed and then the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second, it was amended by councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that joint motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
It is 7:11. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items and I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion, I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
My councilmember, Pullman. Second by councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go to pending legislation, Agenda Item Number Six, second reading ordinance involving water and sewer service rates.
An ordinance amending section 935.02 and repealing section 935.12 of chapter 935 sewer rates and amending section 939.01 of chapter 939, water of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio relative to water and sewer service rates, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
My councilmember, Fear, seconded by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion or questions about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Mayor, oh please.
I've got a few things I'd like to state. Regarding these utility rate increases, as a city councilman, I'm responsible for the well-being of our city as a place and the well-being of Hamiltonians, the people who live, work, and thrive in this place. I took a note to make reasonable and responsible decisions that are in the best interest of Hamilton as an administration and Hamilton as a group of individuals and families. I take my oath seriously and give some times, no matter how much I weigh the pros and cons of a choice, my decision will seem reasonable and responsible to some, but to others. Tonight's vote on a utility rate increase is such a decision. As you know, Hamilton is the only state in Ohio, excuse me, the only city in the state of Ohio that owns and operates its own utilities. This is hugely important. It's a key asset that attracts business and industry to our city. It's a key component to our continued progress and success, and it is vital that we keep our utilities strong, durable, and reliable. A strong utility system requires continued system upgrades, repairs, and critical maintenance to ensure we are delivering the safest and most reliable energy to not only our businesses, but to your home. And if you've ever lived outside of Hamilton, you know that the taste and quality of our water and the quality of our utilities plus the reliability of our utilities is something to be envied. On the other hand, raising utility rates is the last thing I want to do during this tough economy. Inflation is hitting you and your families from every angle, gas, food, education, clothing, and entertainment, everything. I know that, I feel it too. Unfortunately, inflation is also raising repair and maintenance costs on materials and products that protect our water and our wastewater utility systems. And these costs will only become more expensive if we wait to address them. As I stated previously, I have a responsibility to our city, both the place and the people. On one hand, to protect and enhance our utility infrastructure, on the other hand, not to ask the taxpayers for more money. The proposed increase is necessary to protect and strengthen our utilities. It will raise over $1 million for critical repairs to our water reclamation plant, our wastewater plant, and will help increase water main replacement throughout the city. By acting now, we can avoid a higher increase later. By acting now, we can stay ahead of critical repairs to keep our utilities efficient and effective. You know, growing up, my mom had a plaque in our kitchen that read, "If I accept the sunshine and the warmth, I must also accept the thunder and the rain." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ryan. This has been presented to Utility Commission and council. We've all seen how we rank cost-wise with, with other, within the Oakwood Report, and you mentioned reliability and you mentioned response time, and we do have award-winning in those areas as well as obviously water taste. Anybody else have anything they want to say at this time? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We now go to Agenda Item Number Seven, second reading ordinance involving community development block grant funds.
An ordinance accepting, appropriating, and budgeting up to $1,626,121 for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG Funds, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any questions or comments on this? Just going through the list of those who are receiving block grant funding, anywhere from fire station to emergency repairs to agencies that we are aware of, like the YWCA and Servicethe City and others, Living Waters. So this is very well thought out and this was gone through various public meetings, and we're here now to vote on the second reading. Any comments by council at all? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Now I'll go to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is second reading ordinance involving the home funds.
An ordinance accepting, appropriating, and budgeting up to $524,520 for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, Home Investment Partnership Home Program, Program Funds, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any questions or comments about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to Agenda Item Number Nine, second reading ordinance involving the license fees for food establishments and food service operations we heard about earlier.
An ordinance amending subparagraphs A through E of section 1733.01 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio relative to license fees for certain food establishments and food service operations and repealing said existing subparagraphs A through E thereof, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Fear. Roll call vote, any discussion first on this? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we go to Agenda Item Number Ten, second reading emergency ordinance involving nuisance appeals board alternates.
An emergency ordinance amending section 1905.25 Appeals Board of Chapter 1905 Administration and Enforcement of the Codified Ordances of the City of Hamilton regarding nuisance appeals board alternates for members, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Nab, seconded by councilmember Pullman. Any questions or comments about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to Agenda Item Number Eleven, under new legislation, first reading of an ordinance involving an off-site TIF.
An ordinance amending a municipal public improvement tax increment financing district in the downtown area off-site TIF established by ordinance number OR 2018-4-38 passed by city council on April 11, 2018 to modify the beginning date for the exemption period and to remove certain parcels, first reading.
Thank you, we go to Agenda Item Number Twelve, two readings of emergency ordinance involving fees for impounded vehicles, new towing service agreement, related matters.
An emergency ordinance amending section 303.08.01 of chapter 303 enforcement, impounding, and penalty of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio relative to fees for public, excuse me, for police impounded vehicles, approving the form of a new towing service agreement and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute said agreements, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion by councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance amending section 303.08.01 of chapter 303 enforcement, impounding and penalty of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio relative to fees for police impounded vehicles, approving the form of a new towing service agreement and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute said agreements, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, two readings of emergency ordinance involving issuance of taxable bonds.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, the amount, and the maximum principal amount of $1,400,000 for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds and declaring emergency, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
First reading or the two readings?
It's the first of two readings.
First of two readings, okay. Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the City of Hamilton, Ohio in the maximum principal amount of $1,400,000 for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city, in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and declaring emergency, that's the second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Motion by councilmember Vaughn, seconded by councilmember Fear. Any comments or discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Thank you, we go to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, which is a resolution involving Joe Nuxhall Way.
A resolution approving a joint funding agreement with the City of Fairfield, Ohio and the City of Hamilton, Ohio for resurface, for resurfacing of Joe Nuxhall Way.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Fear, seconded by councilmember Nab. I just want to say a couple of things, the folks who made the first and the second and myself were involved when there came, I believe, a Joe Nuxhall Way. Now, it's one of the very, really good projects that kind of brought Hamilton and Fairfield back together. I know John Nuxhall always said how important that was, that the cities got together and did that. So it's just the right thing to do to have this joint agreement, to resurface it and continue a great-looking, able-to-be-used Joe Nuxhall Way. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We go to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, it's a resolution involving a Fairway Hills concrete repair and resurfacing program.
A resolution ordering the resurfacing and repair of streets and concrete where necessary and appropriate on various streets and avenues in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, Fairway Hills Concrete Repair and Resurfacing Program Assessment, roll.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions, comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
And Item Number Sixteen, resolution involving Veterans Month.
A resolution declaring the month of November 2022 as Veterans Month in the City of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
My councilmember Nab, seconded by councilmember Pullman. Any comments or discussion about this? I just want to thank Chris Haynes for being here today and discussing the Veterans Update. He does work for the city, great city employee. This is a fine representative of a veteran who, after serving, started back into public started back in the public service again. He did mention some of the things that are going on this November. Hope we can do this every year in the name of Veterans Month. Couple of things he did not get a chance to mention. Well, I'm going to re-mention the Veterans Park Memorial. That does need funds in order to put the inscription of names up there who gave it all since Desert Storm, just before Desert Storm. And one he didn't mention, which I'm going to mention, is a gentleman named Fred Brown, buried at Greenwood Cemetery, Garfield High School graduate. I think if I mentioned his name before, I know Councilmember Nab knows about him. Two Sergeant, Vietnam, who saved the lives of three injured soldiers who were caught in a firefight, and he went in and took each one out. The third one he took out, he was fatally wounded, and he succumbed to those particular injuries. And he actually threw himself also between a grenade and the third person who he brought out. A gentleman who's got a marker at Greenwood Cemetery. It's a Veterans marker, but for a gentleman who earned a distinguished service cross, one of the few people who can get that, and I think one higher than that, Councilmember Nab, it's the Medal of Honor.
It is, yeah, thank you.
So we hope we can raise funds for that particular marker. But also, over the years, I've been mentioned by even council members on this council about having some street banners put up to recognize not just veterans, but also first responders. And I think Councilmember Fear mentioned it to me, Councilmember Nab mentioned it to me. Some of you folks recently have mentioned it to me, and that's something which we need to take a look into, and this could maybe raise awareness. When you raise awareness, you raise funds. So it's not as appropriate that we make November 2022 Veterans Month. We've got a first and a second. Any other comments by members of council at this time? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Okay, we now go to Agenda Item Number Seventeen, which is, we all got Agenda Item Number Seventeen before the meeting started. So do you want to read that into the record, please, Mr. City Clerk?
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of an emergency grant application for funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission relative to funding for the Terry Court, Terry Lane, Wildwood Court, Rost Hill Drive, Columbia Road, Water Main Replacement Project, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second. By Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this one? This is one where we had a young lady came to the podium who contacted all of council. But also, this is a recognition of what we can do, and we had to do things pretty quick because this all, I think this happened within the last day or two, getting these funds from the Public Works Commission. Any other comments? If not, we've got a first and a second. Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Okay. I believe that takes care of the agenda. Audience, the city manager? For the...
I have nothing.
All that to say nothing. Okay. Audience, the city council.
Mr. Mohler, I'd like to thank you for coming by our practice this week. We had a great game on Saturday. The player for me, it turned out to be ready to go and is cleared for this week. I'd also like to wish Arby Crouch good luck this week and congratulations on a final game with a regular season victory. I think that's big for the program. And I know that he's had some struggles this year, but he has weathered the storm, and I'm looking forward to better seasons ahead.
I agree totally. I think he's going to flip it to seven and four next year instead of four and seven.
I hope so.
But whatever. It's great to go to the playoffs, what an exciting time for these young people. And I see Councilmember Lauer coaching at Dayton. It's, he is all over the place. The students are listening to him, and I was like, "Pat, you got to meet this guy. He's going to go anywhere he wants to go." So I'm meeting all these players that he's coaching and making better people, and it's just great what you're doing in both school systems. Anybody else on council at this time? I was wondering, you have three new firefighters who got thrown in on Monday, and several firefighters were also recognized for a fire in Brooklyn. It was a good event, and it's just great to see the fire family, the city family, the families of those being hired all together, just celebrating something positive for our city. All right, request for executive session?
There is, for two reasons. One, to consider the purchase property for public purpose or the sale of property at competitive bidding. If premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive advantage or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interest is adverse to the general public interest, and also to confer with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
I'm going to add number two, which involves appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee. All right, regarding the number one involving the confidential information.
That was not one of the...
Oh, you did not say that? I thought you did. I thought we were going to go into one for that. Yes, we are. Number three, purchase of real estate.
Three and four.
The three and four, but we have nothing to talk about regarding confidential information. Okay. Okay, then I don't need to go into this special, special motion. There goes that one. The motion we go to executive session for those stated purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote to go to executive session for those stated items.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
We'll come into executive session at 7:33. We'll come into executive session just to adjourn the regular meeting. Thank you for being part of the process.